All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting together on an unusual night of the week for us. It's Tuesday, April 12th, 2016, and the Board has already met in a closed session, and we're just reconvening. I don't think we need to call this part to order, do we, at this point? So, we've already called to order, and we're just reconvening into the public here. So, with that, we're going to open up with, we have three separate public hearings. And the first public hearing is BA 16252. It's a public hearing for the FY 2015-16 budget amendment. And as we look into this, Laurel, have there been any written comments at all from anyone?
I have not received written comments of any three of the public hearings.
Are there any audience members that would like to address the Board about this in a public hearing? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing. Next, we'll go into BA 16253. It's a public hearing for fiscal year 2016-17 budget. And have we had any written comments on that? No? Anybody in the audience that would like to address the Board at this time about BA 16253? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing. And then lastly, we'll go into BA 16254. It's a public hearing for the sale of property by Pierce Elementary School. Any public comment in writing to us about that?
No public comment, or written comment.
No written comment, okay. And is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the Board about BA 16254? And we'll go ahead and close that public hearing. Next, we'll move into the superintendent's report.
Yep, great, thanks President Lavery. Some good news to share this evening. The first one, we've shared this news a little bit, but it's worth mentioning again because it's a really great, exciting though. So, we are celebrating the fact that 750 of our kindergarten through 4th grade students will be participating in summer instruction, thanks to a three-year grant of $675,000 from the 21st Century Community Learning Program. In fact, the grant may be extended by two additional years for a total of more than $1 million. The summer program, called Kids on Course University, is being developed with the Zach Johnson Foundation. In addition to Kids on Course, our partners in this collaborative effort include, and this is one of the parts that's probably most exciting, Horizons, a family service alliance, will provide USDA-approved breakfast and lunch each day. Kirkwood Community College will provide adult literacy and adult education program navigators to present at parent night events. The United Day will coordinate a pen pal for all 3rd and 4th graders, and the Youth Achievement Corps will fund 12 AmeriCorps members to serve as classroom assistants. And our Cedar Rapids Schools Foundation will provide funds to staff the libraries at each location. So, the six-week summer program will be held July 5th to August 15th, and we're now in the process of hiring some 70 summer staff members for the program. Probably one of the most important caveats to add to that is, we've had some experience implementing this in the past, and the results are amazing. So, we're confident that this is gonna be a productive time spent for our students this summer. The annual student art exhibit is currently on display at the Artisan Sanctuary in the Czech Village. The exhibit features drawings, paintings, photography, ceramics, and sculpture by student artists from Jefferson, Kennedy, and Washington High Schools. The show will continue through April 27th, and the gallery's open Thursday through Sunday afternoons. And this is one of those times where it's good to be the superintendent. I actually get a private screening with some of the students here soon, so I'm pretty excited about that. Board of Education Directors John Lavery, Gary Ann Halt, and Keith Westercamp are on hand to receive the 2016 Magna Award at the National School Board Association's Annual Conference held last week. The district's Iowa Big program was recognized as one of the first-place winners in the enrollment category of 5,000 to 20,000 students. The Magna Awards are determined by a panel of independent judges that review programs showcasing school district leadership, creativity, and commitment to student achievement. So, we have that award here tonight.
Yes, absolutely. We had a great time in Boston, and congratulations to the school district administration on that terrific award.
Thank you.
And I think we should call out Dr. Pickering and all of his work on that especially. So, thank you, Trace, for leading us in that effort, too.
Thanks, Trace. Congratulations to Washington High School's Momentum Show Choir and Kennedy High School's Happiness Incorporated Show Choir on their outstanding performances at Show Choir Nationals in Nashville, Tennessee, earlier this month. Momentum placed 4th, and Happiness placed 6th in the competition held at the Grand Old Opry. Momentum's Shondale Young was also named top male solist for the competition. Congratulations to the student performers, the directors, and the parents who cheered them on. And then finally, I'm pleased to share a new video produced for our Realtor Resources webpage. Realtors are easily able to share this link with prospective home buyers as an introduction to our school district and invitation to learn more about us. Welcome to Cedar Rapids and the Cedar Rapids Community School District. As Superintendent of Cedar Rapids Schools, it's my pleasure and honor to introduce you to our school district. Whether you're already a resident of the area or preparing to move here, I welcome you to learn more about our tremendous community and outstanding school district. The Cedar Rapids Community School District is the learning home for more than 17,000 preschool through 12th grade students and some 2,700 employees. We're the second-largest school district in Iowa and the fourth-largest employer in our county. I'm also proud to share that our students consistently score above the state average on the ACT College Readiness Assessment. Our high school offers some 30 advanced placement courses and have been named the top Iowa schools on the Washington Post listing of America's most challenging high schools. More than 166 athletic programs and diverse activities are offered in the middle or high schools. From archery to zumba and everything in between, there's an opportunity for every student to pursue their interests and showcase their talents. Our outstanding fine arts programs are nationally recognized and celebrated, and our student athletes regularly receive scholarships. Our district actively pursues innovative learning practices that provide parents and students with more choices for personalized learning. These include magnet schools, high school courses for 8th graders, and the Iowa Big project-based high school program. Student learning in our schools is supported by more than 6,700 volunteers and over 100 community business partnerships. Our students and staff also step up to support the needs of our community through service projects and outreach efforts. We're proud to be part of the city of Cedar Rapids, named an all-American city. Cedar Rapids boasts a thriving business community and showcases a wealth of arts and culture organizations. These entities also help to enrich the learning environment for our students through well-established partnerships. I invite you to learn more about our school district through our website and by visiting our schools. We would love to have you join us in the Cedar Rapids Community School District. There it is. So, there we go.
Nice job.
Yeah, good job, Marcia.
All right. We have time for Board reports. Is there anybody that would like to talk about anything going on with the Board right now? I know a couple of us were at the National Convention for School Boards, so.
John, just real quickly, to me, I walked away with a couple of overriding themes, and one is that across the country, schools are looking at changing the way they do business, looking at promoting creativity and imagination, restructuring their schools to work toward 21st century learning. And the other is equity, closing the achievement gap, cultural competency, all areas that all schools across the country are facing and looking at. And the cultural competency wide range, one of the things I heard was that every district should spend about a full two days of training early in the year to cultural competency training. So, as we move forward, a lot of things to go back and look at. I think it was well worth the efforts to do that.
Absolutely. And I'm assuming, Keith, you've found the same experience?
I did, and I'll have a report. I just got back, so I haven't been able to put it together. But I think another theme that's out there is the education of Board members. And, you know, Lighthouse District, the State on Lighthouse study, rather, that was done, and that Boards are essential to the skills and growing of the students. And a lot of school districts have a lot of difficulty with that, so. And also, Trace, a lot of the programs you're working on were really highlighted in how graduation standards are changing so much that it's becoming portfolios. Some schools aren't even asking for GPAs. So, there's a lot of changes coming, and it's very enlightening to hear about what all's going on in the country and present some challenges for us.
It's definitely a great experience for the Board members to go and learn from these different national leaders and other Boards that are doing best practices, and it's rewarding to hear that we are really on the cutting edge. We're not there all the way yet, but we're on the right track, and that just kept getting reinforced throughout. And I think the three of us that were there, there were certainly some sessions that stood out, and we'll try and share too much. And I was joking earlier, I know superintendents hate it when Board members come back from these national conferences and bring all that fun stuff, but, you know, we're pretty excited, and this really is a great Board. I think we have a terrific Board coming back, so. Anything else anybody wants to talk about? I have one other thing, and I put this in front of you in the last couple of weeks, and this is really statewide, but it came out in the Gazette in the editorial page about schools and funding, and, you know, kind of down on how public schools are spending money and so forth versus what the state has been able to grant us in statewide SSA funding. The Grantwood AEA has put together a proposed op-ed piece that just kind of rounds out that funding piece of what we're really spending our money on, what are really our priorities, what we're trying to do as public education here locally, anyway. And would like the superintendents and school board presidents to sign off on that. So, I forwarded that to you. You have a paper copy of it, but I think unless there's a lot of pushback or anything on that or negative feedback, it seems reasonable to me to sign off on that. So, I just wanted to have that sort of as a public discussion. If there is anything, you can certainly talk to us now or let me know later after the meeting, and we can take that into account. I know that several education groups in Iowa, and I also shared the initial draft of that with all of you, and I think Lou Finch sent it up from the UEN, but ISCEA and the UEN and some of the, I think, SAI, the administrators of Iowa, all came together and had a very similar sort of message. There are lots of things that are priorities for school districts. We're doing really good work. There certainly are the needs out there. The students and the needs of the students have changed dramatically, so just again to kind of round out the message that public schools maybe aren't spending the money in the right way or whatever. So, just wanted to share that with all of you.
Yep.
John, another key point is although they have set the allowable growth, or.
State supplemental aid, yeah.
Thank you. Old school. For next year, 2017, they still are in violation of the code and have not set, which they should have done the first 30 days, for 2018. And as we come back from the conference and as we start looking at program development and so on, it is important that we have at least an idea of what level of funding we're going to be so we can start really seriously talking about and crafting those. So, again, I'm disappointed in not only the level of funding for this year, but the fact that we could very well, that they won't, we won't see anything for this legislative season. We'll have to wait till January of next year to even get numbers for that year.
Well, and again, we don't want to get into too much discussion with all of this, but, you know, in talking with the ISB, IASB leadership, maybe rethinking our approach to this instead of going hands-out, saying you're just not giving us enough money, helping them understand all the great things that we are doing as a public school system and our district in particular. So, any sort of specific examples in our funding, you know, things that we're doing to really maximize what monies we are getting, that might be a way to go. Gary, I think you suggested at the last Board meeting that we look at some of those students that came. Trace, you had all those great students doing project-based learning and the magnet schools, and let's get some of that video together and get that out there and get some of our business partners and parents and things able to use that with some of our legislators so that they understand how we are trying to innovate and maximize and use the money, taxpayers' money wisely. So, anyway, that's all I have. So, if anybody has any comments to that, feel free to say it now, or you can talk about it later with me and Brad. Yeah, Keith?
You're right, ISB.
Is putting together a program right now to try and change the thrust for the future of what are we all about, what's our real needs, the growth, what we are doing, the sell, you know, get the programs out there and the accomplishments that we have, given the diet that we have.
Absolutely. All right. Any other Board reports or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll go move into Communications and Delegations and Petitions. And I have two requests before the Board. And just a reminder, we have five minutes per presenter, and just when you approach the podium, just give us your name and your address, and Laurel Day will keep track of the five minutes, and we'll start with Larry Winkowski. Oh, and by the way, I should tell you, Larry, since you're here, thank you for the sheets. We do have Robert's rules now, which is helpful, so thank you.
Lawrence Winkowski, 4234 Merrell Road, Northeast. I'll start with part of a letter published in the Gazette on February 14th by an Ace Joyce Williams of Cedar Rapids. She stated that "My 37-years teaching career started in 1947. It was with eyes wide open that teaching would not be a punch-in-and-punch-out-on-the-clock kind of job. Teaching is a profession. A dedicated professional of any genre can expect to spend extra time and energy whether it is convenient or not. First, I must be clear. There are many great teachers in our district who go beyond an eight-hour day and five-day work weeks to educate our students. Teachers whose first loyalty is to educate all of their students, even when that means they are not following their contract. I want to comment on a few statements that a CREA member made on February 22nd meeting with regards to teachers showing up to professional development time, we heard, as long as the professional development that is being offered is being differentiated, tailored to our needs, suited to our students, and what we think, and so on." This was not a comment I was looking for. If teachers don't like structure or quality of their professional development opportunities, it's okay to not show up wrong. The answer should have been, members of the CREA will work together to make sure all teachers show up for professional development opportunities. As professionals, teachers need to find the water even when they are not being led to it. As for the statement, we don't kick our students out of schools, we don't say when the bell rings, we are not, we're done with you, and so on. This is true for many of our teachers. Unfortunately, like all professions, some of our teachers are what I would refer to as a minimalist, a teacher who does what they have to do to get tenure and then work according to their contract. When their eight hours are up, the doors close. We cannot meet with them before school until after they have their prep time, forget a lunch meeting, a half hour of their paid lunches in the contract. We need to quit hiding these minimalists and call them out for who they really are. The most important part of a teacher's contract should be about educating the student, not about the hours worked or paid lunch. They probably exist in another group of professions where you can get an eight-hour paid lunch, eight hours of work with a paid lunch, but I'm personally not aware of it. I heard from several parents about teachers complaining about professional development opportunities to their students. Our community and many of the students will go out of their way to support teachers in need. However, teachers need to be professionals and respect their students. Teachers should never criticize school programs or other professional issues that don't concern their students. Take it up with the administrators or your union. There is a certain aspect of teachers' personal lives that may exist and should never be talked about in front of students. Spousal abuse, infidelity, divorce, alimony, child support, and child custody, just to name a few of them. Many of our students are under stress, and they come to school to escape these kinds of situations. Teachers need not remind the students of what they are not missing. Students are not therapists for teachers. Teachers should use the EAP or other health benefits for assistance. Each Joyce Williams letter ended, yes, this is 2016. Time has changed the variables of the equation. The content of the equation remains the welfare of our students and their families. Thank you.
Mr. Winkowski. Next, we have Tanya Johnson.
Tanya Johnson, 38, 16 Riverside Drive, Northeast, and I am addressing you as a CREA president. I was really fortunate last night to be a part of the committee that is reviewing the paperwork for the Lynn County Educator of the Year. We had several finalists, and that once again reminded me how awesome it is to be a teacher in Cedar Rapids and how many great, great educators we have. We will be having a Educator of the Year reception Thursday, May 5th, at the Kirkwood Hotel at 4:30, and you will be getting some invitations to that, so you don't have to write it down, but if you would make sure that your calendars are open, we will send that out to Dr. Buck and the school board members Thursday, May 5th at 4:30. And then I also wanted to let you know that another really important thing is happening right now, and that is the nominations for the state Teacher of the Year. I happen to know just a little bit about that, and it's a pretty awesome opportunity that we can give teachers in our district. There has only been one Teacher of the Year from Cedar Rapids, which is a shame because I know that we have lots and lots of great teachers here. So, families, teachers, administrators, whoever wants to, the nominations for the state Teacher of the Year are due April 25th, and you can find those at the Iowa Department of Ed website. If you need any help finding that, please let me know, and I will be sure to get you the form. It's a very simple form and just a nominating letter, and then the teacher kind of does all the work. So, thank you very much.
Are there any questions or items on the consent agenda that anybody would like to pull for comment or discussion? All right. None? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
Is there a second? Second?
Second.
Second, and this is a roll call vote.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
Director Ann Halt?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
President Lavery?
Aye. All right, administrative report, so we'll go ahead and move into the approval of the budget amendment resolution. Steve, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, President Lavery, Superintendent Buck, and Board of Education. We talked about this at our last Board meeting. Our budget amendment is simply a realignment of new information based upon what we know now versus what we knew a year ago when we originally published the budget. No increases in property taxes will result in this amendment. It's a very routine thing that we do every year. So, I'm happy to answer questions, and there is a recommendation at the bottom of the print and pack sheet.
Any questions? All right. This is a voice vote, so all of those in favor of approving fiscal year 2015-16 budget amendment resolution is written. Signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same? Any abstentions? All right, so it does pass. Thank you. And then we'll move into the approval of the fiscal year 2016-17 certified budget. And again, Steve, any comments or questions?
This is a fairly straightforward, repetitive presentation that I basically did for you at the last Board meeting, no changes at all here. Maybe what I could do is isolate on one chart, and we can move to that quickly and then answer questions, should there be any. This is a very nice chart showing our property tax levy rate, solid. It will be unchanged for fiscal '17. We now know that the governor signed SSA at 2.25%. This is a graph that I showed you at our last Board meeting, and I want to isolate just for a moment on our unspent balance or spending authority at 2% that you see in this slide. To give you a little comparative perspective here, this is a slide that you've not seen. This is one that provides a, for the 12 largest schools in the state of Iowa, the Cedar Rapids School is to the second to the last on the right-hand side because we're the second-largest district in the state, and we have $347 per student. This is all on a student basis, so we're all, you know, we have a level playing field of comparability here. $347 per student of spending authority, and you can see how it ranks in comparison to some of the other districts while keeping by far the largest in terms of spending authority per pupil. But Iowa City and Davenport are kind of in the realm that the Cedar Rapids Community School District is in at this point. So, honestly, that's the only real major change. No change from our proposed budget that we discussed at our last meeting we published. There is information here for a budget guarantee. The information went out prior to the governor signing off on state supplemental aid, so there's no need for a budget guarantee resolution component. So, I would recommend that the Board, if ready, to simply approve the certified budget for fiscal '17.
Any questions or comments to Steve on that?
Before your vote, I'd like to talk a little bit about the line item budget.
Yeah, absolutely. Dr. Buck?
Are you guys ready for that part?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, it may be helpful, as you think about budgets, you know, Steve's talking about certified budget, there's also within that budget a line item budget. And the line item budget is really the conversation about, that we've been having for several months at this table and honestly out with staff in many venues. And so, I would start with this, and it's a lot of what Steve talked about, that authority position that we're in, that little bitty bar, so the amount of authority that we have per student is really a big deal. And so, one of the expectations that you've had of the superintendent and been clear around this is, you need to be presented with a balanced budget, and that's really at the line item level. So, we've been talking about, we've been making some assumptions. We still have a few assumptions left in this budget, but we do know state supplemental aid, and we do know enrollment. And because we know that, we believe at the line item level, excuse me, we're gonna need to make about $2.3 million in reductions. So, as you think about $2.3 million in reductions, like all of you, that has been weighing heavy on each of us as we think about what that means within our district. So, it may be helpful for people to understand kind of the line of thinking that goes into, if you're gonna make $2.3 million in reductions, sort of how do you think about that? And so, one of the things we think about is, are there funding streams? Because you've heard this conversation many times, there's buckets of money in schools. The fund that we're really trying to protect is the general fund, and that's the authority and cash conversation. And one of the things we want to look into is, are there other funding sources that we can use to additionally support our classrooms and kids that we can go back and capture authority around? And there's really two pretty good examples of that. One is special education, and one is English language learning or ELL. And so, one of the things that we're going to look into as we're talking about unpacking what $2.3 million in reductions actually means is digging back into both our special education and our ELL and taking a look at, are there opportunities there to create additional supports legally, that's clearly an important part of it, to our classrooms that doesn't put additional stress on the general fund budget? So, that's one of the things that we'll take a look at, and we've been sort of digging into that conversation. sort of digging into that conversation. And actually, I think we could point to some examples where we've already taken some action in early, Sheila, help me out here. The early, gosh.
Early learning, early childhood programs.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. So, we've had some additional staff there and tried to reconfigure that to the benefit of our kids. So, in addition to that, so that's one of the things we think about. Another thing we think about is, we're working to keep class sizes where they are, and it'd be nice if they got even smaller, but we're trying to keep these decisions to the extent we can away from classrooms. Now, the reality part of that piece of the conversation is, about 83% of our general fund budget is staff costs and costs associated with staff. So, when you think about a number like $2.3 million in reduction, and you want to keep that away from classrooms, that's important, but also realistically, I mean, when 83% of your budget is people, people are going to be a part of the mix of these conversations. So, I would say the next thing we think about is, we work to try to avoid the elimination of programs, and I think Cedar Rapids over the years has worked hard to avoid the elimination of programs. One of the things that's important to keep in mind here is, while we're talking about a couple million dollars in reduction here, this is actually millions 19 and 20 approximately of reductions over the last six or so years. So, this isn't like the first $2 million on 200 million. We're into the 19th and 20th million, which is a very different part of the conversation to enter. The other thing we think about is, how do we keep people employed to the fullest extent possible to keep them employed? So, we're going to see reductions, and I'll give an example here of reductions in teaching staff. And even in reducing teaching staff through attrition, retirement, those kind of things, are we still able to, to the best extent we can, keep people employed in the system? So, I'll give an example. So, there's really this idea of, can we access other funding streams to additionally support our schools? A recognition that reductions are going to happen, and then there is also recognition that there's additions in cost beyond the $2.3 million. And so, let me give you a couple reduction examples. One reduction example is, we have, we are moving our high schools next year to a single schedule, and that single schedule is going to have every teacher teaching six, a full-time teacher teaching six periods out of seven. And so, what we've done in that model is, caught in a cold here, and it's not, and it's still on me. So, essentially what we've done there is, we've added additional teaching time expectations to our high school teachers, and in so doing, capture back time and then gone and said, now you need to reduce FTE through that gain. So, the quick math would be this. You have 60 teachers or so at the high school, and this isn't exactly right, but just for the sake of this. You have about 60 teachers at the high school that this could impact. They each teach an additional section. Now, all of a sudden, you have 60 additional sections of time. If you divided that by six periods, that's a teacher's time, you end up with 10 additional FTE or full-time teacher equivalent without adding a single staff member. And so, what we've done then is gone to the high school teachers and said, we're going to have that happen, and then we're going to reduce FTE. So, what's a little bit strange and respectfully to our teachers, because this is asking them to do more, so absolutely want to acknowledge that, though. It may actually reduce class sizes in some cases and expand course offerings at the same time we're going to reduce FTE. So, that's an example of high school level. So, we'll have at least four FTE, and I think that's what we're planning for, at each of our high schools, reduced as part of, so there's a reduction example. Another reduction example is, so there's certified, that'd be a certified example with teachers. There'll be likely impacting classified staff, so that's parent educators, secretaries, custodians, that's probably not quite all fleshed out yet. And then, are there other areas where a reduction can occur? So, this would be an example. We're going to transfer a cost from general fund to SAVE. So, all of the non-instructional software in the district, there's recurring costs for that. So, it's time clock, it's, oh, gosh, I started a list, I should look. Time clock, our accounting software, our HR software. So, there's all examples of software that we use with the annual fees associated with it, that's non-instructional software. It's appropriate to take non-instructional software costs out of SAVE, so the SAVE Fund, and we've been paying for that out of the general fund. So, there's an example where we're going to do a reduction, we're going to work on that $2.3 million, that keeps it away from classrooms and transfers the cost to a different fund. Examples of additions to the fund, so we have alternative kindergarten program, and it's been a half-day program, and I would say regarded as successful and attractive thing for Cedar Rapids schools. The Daga and Iowa Department of Education has decided that, I don't know who the director was when this was decided. Gosh. Anyway, kids in kindergarten should be held to all of the expectations of the Iowa Core. That's essentially what was decided, and it makes good-
With NAPS.
With NAPS, yeah. And I'm going to say, and it was a really good decision, yeah. And so, if you think about the alternative kindergarten program, it was a half-day program, and so this idea that you could take alternative kindergarten, deliver on the promise of all of the expectations of kindergarten in a half-day, that's just not possible, right? It's not even practical. And it's, and we don't do that for sort of the regular kindergarten. So, we believe this is important, is valuable enough to the kids and to Cedar Rapids schools. We're going, we had three teachers doing that, but they taught six sections because they did a half-day in the morning and a half-day in the afternoon. So, we believe in that programming such that we're going to add three more teachers, so we'll have still six sections of that, but instead of that being delivered by three teachers, that's delivered by six teachers. So, it's not the case singularly that it's just a $2.3 million reduction. That's actually a cost onto the 2.3 to drive that number to closer to 2.5, or don't get hung up on the math, but I mean, that's, it's that kind of an example. So, another example, and this was actually in the Education Committee in the Legislature today, another example is, it looks like smarter balanced is going to become the assessment of, for the state, and that's a good thing. I absolutely believe smarter balanced is the right assessment for Iowa. It's just that it will cost us approximately $265,000 to have our kids take it next year, and right now, it looks like there will be no additional funding stream for that. So, when you're thinking about this $2.3 million number, it's not just reductions, but it's important priority decisions that are additions that then have to be accounted for in a total and overall reduction. So, I just think, not all that's been fleshed out yet, and it's still dynamic. We still have people retiring, we still have people leaving positions that potentially creates attrition and potentially creates these other savings. So, just thought it'd be important for the, for those with us, but also knowing that there's lots of people in the community that watch this, just to give a sense for kind of the thinking that we're using to arrive at, at the decisions that will ultimately made around these reductions. So, I don't know if there's any questions.
Thank you. Yeah. Any questions or comments from the board?
Can I just clarify a point? That you said, keep the teachers employed, I think you really mean to say, keep the teachers in front of the students, that as low ratio as we can.
Well, and employed. So, if we have a situation like at our high schools where we're reducing FTE, working hard to, to see if we can get a position within our organization for that teacher rather than having her, her actually leave the district. So, I think it's, I think it's fair to say it's probably both of those things. Yeah. Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Other comments? All right. Thank you, Dr. Buck, and to Steve. And with that, we do need to have a formal approval of this certified budget by a voice vote. So, all of those in favor of approving the fiscal year 2016-17 certified budget as presented, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, the same. Abstentions? None? So, that does pass. Great. And we'll move on next to BA 16-262, the approval for the resolution of sale of property by Pierce Elementary School. And Rob will let you have the podium on this one.
This is a big sale. I think we're selling about 90 square feet on Maryland Drive and 42nd Street on, to the city of Cedar Rapids, so this is a big one here. Pretty, pretty simple. The city of Cedar Rapids is trying to expand, widen Maryland onto 42nd Street with all of the 42nd Street construction going on there. So, it's a pretty simple sale of property. It's not going to impact us down the road, and it's going to improve actually the entrance and exit onto Maryland Drive for the parents at Pierce, so.
Thank you. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to approve the resolution for sale of the property by Pierce Elementary School. Is there a motion for that sale?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. This is a roll call vote.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
Did you have something key?
No.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. It does pass. So, next we'll move into learning and leadership, and I'll turn this over to you, Carla.
Good evening, Dr. Buck and Board. I am very excited to be standing in front of you this evening, and we are going to share information with you regarding our K5 elementary language arts reading materials adoption. So, we're, we have spent about a year working on this, actually, and I want to introduce the people that I have with me because this has been a huge project. Susan Van Wart is our K5 elementary language arts facilitator and has done a phenomenal job with this process. Some of our committee members are Catherine Metz, who's currently a first-grade teacher at Arthur, and Greg O'Connell, who is the principal at Coolidge Elementary. Also, in the audience, we have some brave members of our team that came for moral support for all of us. So, I want to acknowledge them, thank them for coming, and thank all of the team members, those that are here, those that are not here, for their time and talents on this adoption. It's been a huge process, so. I think between all of us, we can answer any of the questions that you have tonight. So, Mark, am I running this, or are you? All right, I'll try. All right. Well, maybe you need to, Mark. Anyway, I'll, while he's working on getting this tied up, I'll go ahead and talk about what we are going to talk about tonight. We want to give you a little bit of an overview of our selection process, so how we did that, what research and how research influenced our adoption decision, what data we looked at, how that influenced the decision that we made as well, and then update you on what materials we actually selected, and then what is the implementation timeline for those materials? How will that look as we move forward? So, I want to talk a little bit about the selection process first. As I said, we have a few people here tonight, but our committee actually consisted of about 35 participants. So, it was a rather large committee. We had K5 classroom teachers from a variety of our elementary schools. We had Title I teachers. We had English language learner teachers. We had packed or talented and gifted teachers represented. We had instructional design strategists from our elementaries on that as well. We had district, district administration and building administration on that committee too. And this team put in a lot of hours, spent a lot of time reviewing the research, looking at data, and then we developed evaluation criteria for the materials. It's not a decision we took lightly, so this happens to actually be our criteria for evaluation. Some of the things that we looked at, the publishers then also presented to us. The criteria included information about the research on reading, so how students learn to read. It included, and the Iowa Core standards, it included what instructional routines are necessary for students to have, and then also, considering our equity work and our diversity work, all of those pieces were taken in. So, did the materials have a diverse representation? What did the technology provide? What was the appropriateness of the materials for our English language learners? All of those pieces were part of the criteria. And I would just like to invite Catherine and Greg to the podium, and I think, you know, it's like Trace brought the students last week. I think they can give you a better sense of what the process was like, so.
I will tell you that the process was not easy. Actually, it was quite overwhelming, because when you looked at all of the factors that we needed to take in, we needed to make sure to look at what was best for all of our kids versus just one certain population, and looking at the research, and then we were actually split up into multiple groups. So, we were looking at the five pillars plus looking as well at oral vocabulary. So, we were making sure that we were hitting our kids from the bottom all the way to the things they needed at the top. So, we're making sure that our beginning learners are getting what they need with their phonological awareness and their phonics until we get to our higher-level kids that are getting the comprehension. And the work we did wasn't just at the meetings either, because we actually would then have to finish researching after groups would, the publishers would come and talk to us. We would have to go in and continue to look and continue to delve in to make sure that the decision we were making was what was right and what we needed.
Well, and I think also looking at, you know, from my perspective, we were looking at the entire building or the entire program. It wasn't just looking at one grade level, and so you're seeing, how is this going to affect our primary kids, and then how are they going to carry that on as they're going through their educational years with us? So, it's looking at the entire program. That was really, it was, it was a big, big process.
If you could help me with that, Carla. I'm so good at it the first time, so.
So, as Carla mentioned, there was just so much study that was a part of this process in launching such a high-impact decision, not one that we took lightly. But in 2000, the National Reading Panel identified five pillars or five essential components to look for in a literacy program, and so the committee members were each responsible for a particular pillar or component, if you will. But coupled with that, and knowing that publishers have a mission, and that is to sell their product, and so we also wanted to make certain, I felt I needed to make certain in particular, the best, we had to make the best decisions possible. So, to learn as much of the research, the neuroscience behind learning to read was extremely important. And so, you can see some images of some text on the slide. But we wanted to make certain that the materials that we looked like, that we looked at, that might be stamped aligned with the common core or stamped, research-based, really were what they said they were or what they claimed to be. So, we tried to really consider those materials with a discerning eye, if you will, and I feel pretty excited about what we, what we found. In addition to that, we also took into consideration what our district data looks like regarding Iowa assessment data, and even with our newer universal screener, the FAST Assessment System, and data explains to us pretty clearly that we have, we are doing well in some areas, but within certain grade levels, we're really working to best find the materials that are going to support student learning, to get the biggest bang for our buck. Even our own district data informed us about that, that we have work to do.
So, our decision that we made, we made it a little hard on ourselves. We decided to go with a split adoption is, is kind of what we're affectionately calling it. As we reviewed the materials, we decided that we really needed to focus on those reading foundational skills at that K2 level and the progressions and how kids learn to read. And so, with that, we determined to purchase Super Kids, which is a Zainer Blazer material that will be used at the K2 level. And I'm going to let Susan really dig into the, like, within that in a second here. At the 3-5 level, we went with McGraw-Hill Wonders. And so, when we reviewed those materials, the McGraw-Hill scored exceedingly on all of our criteria for that level, the, and, but Super Kids really hit the mark, we felt, with the foundational skills, and I'll let Susan talk a little bit about why that was. Sorry, Susan.
The Zainer Blazer Super Kids program is really like few others. It is aligned with the reading research that I did about the neuroscience of learning to read. It's very progressive, very systematic, teaches single sounds and letters that are attached to those sounds in a very progressive way. So, in kindergarten, they, it's not a quick pace, but it's a pace that really works to develop the neural pathways that the brain actually needs in order to learn to read. It's very connected, the, the, learning the sounds, the decoding or figuring out words, the writing of the sounds, everything, the text that students read is only those letters and sounds that they've been taught. There's really no guessing, so they have lots and lots and lots of practice. By the end of kindergarten, they'll learn all the consonant sounds and the vowel sounds, short vowel sounds, and then it's pretty amazing how many words you can decode when you know all those sounds. When they- By the end of kindergarten, they'll learn all the consonant sounds and the vowel sounds, short vowel sounds. And then, it's pretty amazing how many words you can decode when you know all those sounds. When they get to first grade, the texts that they read is only decodable text. So, they're practicing, 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 building accuracy and automaticity, which is what our current FAST data indicates that perhaps we have some difficulty with that. Well, we do, many students do. And so, if we can get this right, and I believe that we have at the K-2 level, that we anticipate that our third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and on up, this is going to have, just be very impactful for students' reading futures.
So, what does the implementation of this look like? It is, we, pretty systematic is our goal here. We want to make sure that the teachers have the materials they need and that we're providing the support they need to make sure this makes a difference for our students, along with the curriculum that we have written and developed. These are materials that support our curriculum. This is not the program that we teach in isolation by itself. But we've identified a curriculum for K-5 Elementary Language Arts, and these materials support that direction where we want to head. So, for example, in May and June, and it's split there because in May, Super Kids, or, I'm sorry, Wonders, is actually providing a pre-implementation workshop for all of our teachers. And then, in June, we are providing that from Super Kids. So, that, what will occur there is going to, they're going to connect the current reading research with those materials. So, how do these materials and research go together? And then, just give kind of an overview of the program, lots of technology components that go with the program. They'll give an overview of those technology components. There will be some online options for teachers that want to delve even further into that over the summer with webinars and that sort of support from the vendors. Then, as we move to August, we will offer again what we're calling an implementation workshop during pre-service. That's where the teachers will learn to navigate the teacher guides. They'll talk about lesson design, we'll talk about those instructional routines that are needed. Kind of how does this fit with our scope and sequence? How does this fit with our curricular units that we've developed? And then, in October, the fall, we have additional support from the vendors. So, for example, with our Super Kids material, Zainer Blazer actually will provide to us onsite coaching for every single one of our special education, ELL, and classroom teachers. They will spend about ninety minutes with each teacher, observing a lesson, providing feedback, and then have a conversation with them with a team. That will occur, and then also McGraw-Hill provides ongoing support. So, those pieces will occur in the fall, and we're looking to see if we can't get a little more of that as we move into the winter. And then, that last box talks a little bit about the ongoing support. So, as a district, we are working very hard as a professional learning team and as an instructional services or curriculum team. How do we provide support to those teachers? We're going to be using that Friday, early dismissal, professional development time. Susan will work with our professional learning team, provide coaching if needed, work with administrators one-on-one, or instructional design strategists one-on-one if needed. We can work with a team if needed, but we want to make sure that we're providing that ongoing support. These materials can make a difference when coupled with our curriculum. And we need to make sure that the teachers have what they need and the support that they need to, to make that happen. So, that is our focus, and we've been working very hard on that focus, so. Sure. Okay. Yes, as part of our adoption process, there was a school district in Wisconsin that used the Super Kids as well that mirrored our demographics. And so, Greg's going to tell you a little bit about that visit, and then we'll answer your questions.
Sure. One of the things we had the privilege of doing way back when it was cold was to go to Wasau, Wisconsin, and it's a very similar demographic to Cedar Rapids. So, we were able to go into one of the elementary buildings, and they had just started to implement Super Kids. And again, it, it was just a very, it was a great experience for us to go in and to see the actual teachers implementing the program. Catherine and I were able to see first grade classroom and see both of the teachers, and they were very much collaborating. And they did both parts of their day and just showed us exactly what it would look like step by step. Then, I was also able to go into a kindergarten classroom and see that classroom and the teacher then spent a lot of time talking with us about how she was definitely a tenured teacher and how she just had to tell herself that, you know what, I'm going to trust the program. And she's done that, and she says she has seen amazing results with her kids. And so, I would say our visit was a great thing for not only me, who was a little bit of a skeptic about the program at first when we were looking at the materials, but then also to be able to come back and share that with our administrators and our teachers.
All right, we would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
Well, it sounds like a really exciting program.
We are excited about it, yes.
Yeah. And you guys have put a lot of work into it, and you know, if it makes a difference, I think that's just going to be great for the students in our district. So, I thank you for that, because, and I can see the enthusiasm, too.
Gary?
When was the last time we did a reading and Language Arts implementation at the elementary level?
I believe it was two thousand eight.
Would one of you be willing to talk a little bit about the unpacking work that you're doing with the standards and sort of how this would fit together? Because that work, to me, is at least as exciting as this, and this is really good stuff, so.
And I'm going to invite Susan, well, and Catherine's a part of that work as well, so I don't want to speak to that. What Dr. Buck is referring to is we have been working very hard on taking the Iowa Core standards, prioritizing those standards, meaning what standards are we teaching at what time, at what grade level? After that work, and then kind of unwrapping them. What, what is the essence of the standard? What do, what does the standard mean? How should that look instructionally for kindergarten, for first, for second, and so forth? And then, we have had teams of teachers, and Susan has been working with Becky Thorson, who's our math facilitator. They've been collaboratively leading these teams to develop what we're calling units, that we have a scope and sequence and units of study. So, I'll let Susan talk a little bit about that work.
The Iowa Core Literacy Standards are just an amazing document. And the way that you can take over a hundred standards and how they work together, how reading, writing, language, listening and speaking all work together. And so, we were able to pull teachers together to actually group these standards together and give a unit a name. And our, knowing that we were going to be doing an adoption of materials in the future, not knowing exactly when, we wanted to make certain that how we group these standards together could stand the test of time. So, not necessarily aligned with a theme, community, or bravery, or something like that, but more about how can we support our students with navigating the complex texts that are informational texts or literary texts? And so, the committee has just worked so hard to try to think about how to make sense of those standards to support teachers so that they had a direction, had, had, trying to make meaning as much as possible. So, we go through a process where we unwrap every standard, which that means is we pull it apart. What do students need to know and what do they need to be able to do? So, after we unwrap all the standards, it takes hours, then we put them back together. And we try to think, what concepts is it that we want students to understand related to those standards? How do they fit together? What is it we want kids to understand? And then, we create these statements called essential understandings. And from that come these questions. What, what questions might we pose to students that will help them with that inquiry? What do good readers need? And I'm not going to be able to even think of, I'm, I'm a little nervous right now, so I'm not going to be able to think of a very good question. But it's really, what strategies might we use? Sorry about that. But it's just exciting work, and so even, I'm not, I, this is new learning and new work for me as well. And I don't have a magic ball, so I'm not exactly certain how everything's going to fit together. But I have done some study, and I'm really excited about how it is fitting together. I think we're doing the right work. I think we're trying to make meaning, we're trying to transfer, not just lessons of the day, but learning over time that will transfer, transfer beyond our classroom wall. Does that, is that?
For a little while, and, especially at the end, people look tired. I mean, it's rigorous. It's rigorous work, right? So, unpacking that, thinking about essential questions, and then, as you're thinking about teaching that, here are some resources that would best support that work in classrooms. And really, not telling our teachers what to do, but rather, as you're in those professional learning communities and you've got that time on Friday, I'm just envisioning that, you take that standard, you read how it's unpacked, you look through those essential questions. Here's some resources that might guide what you'll do next in your classroom based on student needs. It is, it is such a robust set of materials to support teaching in our classrooms. It's just, it's amazing. And having been in other places, it's just absolutely amazing to me, this resource and support that'll be in place for our teachers to do even better work for our kids, so.
The standards, like, are the non-negotiable piece, and then the materials support that. And there are many of these teachers have been on those team, curriculum writing teams as well.
They're invested in the work.
That's awesome. And so, are there, Gary, you have questions?
Well, just, I think, just a follow-up. As we were talking earlier about smarter balance being an assessment, it's my understanding that there is a very good correlation between the core and, and the Iowa Core. They're a little bit different, but, and the smarter balance that it does address. So, I think it's critical that the materials we're using do have an alignment to the core because whether we like it or not, that's what, how we're going to be assessed on it. So, it sounds like we're doing that work and there's, there's a good parallel.
I was just going to say, as part of that unit development, that curriculum writing piece, there are, it's, it is elaborate, frankly, but there are formative assessment components to that, summative assessment components to that, that provide options for teachers. And in addition, our benchmark assessments that we give three times a year are aligned. Those assessments that we embed in those units are aligned to smarter balance, as well as our district kind of benchmark assessments where we kind of look at bigger picture, also mirror smarter balance. So, at the elementary level in English Language Arts, it is a performance-based assessment.
And that's part of the, smarter balance is also depth of knowledge conversation that's different from Iowa Assessment, and that's all over these conversations as I've observed them. And it's really rigorous things, you know, you read a paragraph, which sentence in that paragraph doesn't support the thesis for that? Well, that's a very different way to think about assessing kids and what they need to really know and understand and be able to do with content than we've asked of them relative to Iowa Assessment. So, your smarter balance comment, it's the content piece, and it's also depth of knowledge and, and really challenging kids on what they need to know and be able to do. So, it's, and they talk about DOK in those meetings all the time, which they caught me up on fairly quickly.
Other questions or comments? Keith?
For the later grades in particular, there's a lot of emphasis on not silo teaching. In other words, reading here, science here, math over here. Does that, does the program follow those guidelines that some of these things need be team-taught?
When you say the program, do you mean the materials we're purchasing? Are they? I would not say they require team teaching necessarily, but there would be articles that are more, that may have some science content to it. For example, cross-curricular contents.
Right, cross-curricular, not teaching reading in isolation.
Yes.
Do you want to add to that? There's a lot of informational text, particularly in grades, well, in all grade levels, but in particular, grades three through and three, four, and five. There's a large concentration of that. And then, also opportunities for teachers to pull in texts that they have as part of their bringing history home and social studies lessons or science lessons, too. They have the freedom to make those choices, to use that text to look for whatever the skills or concepts that they're supporting.
That goes back to the standard is what is tight. The standard has to be taught, the materials can support that. And so, it can be Language Arts materials, it could be Science materials, it can be Social Studies materials.
When will the materials be in the district? When will the teachers have?
I am so happy you asked that.
Well, good.
Because we just received an email today that this, they, this has been an amazing, I mean, an, like, undertaking. So, we are actually, since we are working with multiple vendors, we have worked with our accounting department. We have worked with our warehouse because they take a lot of space. We have done lots of things. So, we are actually, as part of that collaboration, sending our own semis. Evidently, you can do that. We don't own semis, I guess, but we can rent them somehow. And so, we're sending. Yeah, we don't own semis. Semis, we do not own semis.
Doctor, doctor, no surprises, we don't own semis.
But our, the people in our warehouse and transportation, I guess, know how to do that. So, they've coordinated with other people who know how to do that, not us, and saved us a small fortune on shipping. And so, the first shipment with Wonders, with McGraw-Hill is ready for pickup. And I'm thinking their warehouse is in Wisconsin, is that right? Or is that Zainer Blazer?
I think it's in Ohio.
Ohio, okay. So, semis will be leaving to go to Ohio, so we should have those first shipment of materials in the district by Friday. So, we found that out today, so we're kind of excited about that. And then, so what, so how we've done that, what, what occurs is we will get the teacher materials first because we want to get those materials in teachers' hands during that pre-implementation piece so that they can explore, spend some time with that before August. So, that's kind of, so we work out a delivery system with those vendors for that. So, they'll come in by Friday, some of them, not all of them. And then, we barcode them and organize them and ship them back out to all of the buildings for distribution. So, the teachers will have those prior to that May thirteenth professional learning. And then, actually, then we'll get a shipment of Zainer Blazer materials for the same kind of flip-around for the June third professional learning for the K-2 teachers. And I'm sure Joe and the warehouse will be very glad when all those are gone. And then, once school ends, then what we'll do is we'll work with both of those companies, and the second shipment from each will come, and that will include the student materials. So, then, anything that is non-consumable will be barcoded and then shipped out over the course of the summer to the buildings. So, the consumable materials will arrive, you know, July, early August, somewhere in that range. They'll arrive in the district earlier, but then they'll be barcoded and shipped out, maybe end of July, early August would be a goal to get that done.
Thank you. The, the purpose of asking that is I know we have some very dedicated staff.
Absolutely.
Lots and lots of dedicated staff, and, and they don't want to, they want to have time to be able to look through the materials. They don't want to have it come as a surprise. And I know many, and I, and we as a board and a district appreciate, we'll be spending some of that long vacation time actually doing, putting in some extra effort to make sure that they're up to speed.
And they will also have their curricular unit to tie with that, so.
That is great.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Well, I want to say that from a personal note, Susan, you had one of my daughters for two years in a row. So, if you're on board with this, I'm good with it. I'm good with it. And you did amazing work with our children, so, and, and Carla and Catherine and Greg and the rest of you that are here. The excitement is certainly, it's something that we're feeling, I think, as a board. And we've been through many of these curricular sort of rollouts, and that's not always the case. And I think Gary's point was well-taken. You know, there are some times we've seen, I've seen a math rollout back a long time ago, before any of you all were probably involved with any of this, that maybe didn't go so well because the teachers really didn't have that time. So, it's nice to see you've really thought through that, you've given everybody time to really absorb it, and that this professional development that we approved in our calendar is going to be used, you know, for a really meaningful purpose in learning this. So, we appreciate that, and I think, you know, as a board, if there's anything else that we can do to help facilitate this, obviously, if we could snap our fingers and get more money to do some of these great programs, we would, you know, we're certainly trying for that. But again, I think for us in supporting this and the public supporting it in parents is, do come back to us, you know, in, in a year or so, and let us know how this program did roll out. You'll have, you'll have some data, you know, you're unpacking, and I know how much work, I can only imagine how much, you know, whoever that, that previous director was at the Iowa Department of Education, who came up with this stuff, I don't know. But, but we'll, we'll figure out who it was and, and talk to him about it. But anyway, we do appreciate you taking the time to do that because it's really for the kids. And all of us sit here and we look, how will this decision impact our students? And there's no doubt that the work that you guys are all doing is going to make a huge difference for our kids. So, thank you from all of us.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, unless there's any other comments, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting, School Board, Calendar. School board calendars are part of the packet, and encourage everyone to fill out their evaluations.
We have a moment of silence.
Oh, yes. We're sorry for that. We do have a moment of silence, and Jill, I'll turn it over to you for that.
Thank you. I'd like to elaborate. I'd like to add to report that we did lose an employee. Ed Sannus began employment in 2011. He was employed in our communication department in the academy.
Okay, there we go. Ed's smile and laid-back approach to whatever was thrown his way will be missed. He loved working on our buses and also to occasionally drive a route so he could interact with students. His hunting and fishing stories provided us all relief in difficult times. He was an asset to our district, and we will miss him. Our sympathy is extended to his wife, who is also employed in our district, and to his family.
Absolutely. So if we could all just have a moment of silence for Ed and his family. All right. Thank you so much. And again, our sympathies to Ed's family and everyone that worked with him and his wife here in the district. So with that, we'll go ahead and close the meeting. Thank you so much.